The order, it's going to be Bryan County Planning and Zoning Commission and Board of Adjustments. Meeting date April 15th, 2025, in Bryan County, Richmond Hill, Georgia. We're going to go ahead and with approval minutes, we'll have a motion to approve the amendments.
I make a motion.
Second?
We all in favor? Everybody read them?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so forth. Do I have a motion to open the Board of Adjustments' public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we are in session. We have a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Would you like me to get started with the first item?
Okay, primary item on the agenda?
So this is a variance for 83 Roundstone Way. This property is located in the Wicklow subdivision. It is approximately 0.38 acres and is zoned R15. Following a code complaint, staff requested the applicant submit a permit for this accessory building shown here. This is a shed located in their backyard, which was constructed without a permit. At this time, staff identified that side and rear setbacks were not being met, and the required rear buffer was being encroached into. So the applicant submitted this variance for your review. They are requesting three variances to reduce the side setback from 15 feet to eight feet, reduce the rear from 25 feet to two feet, and to encroach into the rear buffer, which is 30 feet, to a minimum of two feet. In terms of the variance criteria, staff did not identify a hardship. The applicant indicated they would have to remove a portion of the shed should the variances not be granted, which would negatively impact the look of the building and incur a large cost for them. However, staff cannot consider appearance or cost under the variance criteria. Additionally, this lot is comparable to other lots within the neighborhood, and there is a buffer on the perimeter of these other lots as well. The applicant also identified the lot's shape due to its location on a cul-de-sac as creating a hardship, and indicated that meeting the setbacks would make the building look bad and obstruct their views. Staff does acknowledge the property is shaped differently from many others in the neighborhood. However, there are several lots on cul-de-sacs that are similar, so it's not a unique condition. Additionally, the applicant did construct a pool in their backyard previously. So this did limit the area for further development there. The applicant also indicated they were unaware of these setbacks when they purchased the property, but they did ask about them when constructing their pool, so they would have had some awareness of these restrictions. Staff also identified the building encroachment during that pool review, as it was shown on the site plan, and so they would have had awareness from that as well. Staff does not find these variances to be consistent with the UDO, so staff is recommending denial of the request of variances because the criteria are not met. And I can answer any questions you have.
I know I looked this up as reading through the, when reading through the packet. Can you remind me what neighborhood this is in?
Wicklow.
Wicklow, okay, thank you.
Have this been before us, before, quite a few years ago?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Wicklow's the fairly new subdivision off of Belfast River. Wicklow's the, a fairly new subdivision on the right off of Belfast.
There's been one or two times in terms of development, houses and stuff, trying to build new houses in the subdivision there. That was last year.
Are there any additional questions?
None that I have. Do we have the applicant who wants to speak? Good evening. If you'd state your name for the microphone, please?
My name's Kevin Krueger. I'm the resident. Probably the only thing that's a little inaccurate in what she said is the rear setback wouldn't be reduced to two feet. I actually have between four and six feet from my back fence, depending on, because it's kind of on an angle. So our whole, you know, reason for putting the shed where we put it was because virtually every house in my neighborhood has a shed in the back rear corner of the property. So we were trying to keep with, in keeping with the format of the neighborhood, that's why we put it there. When I had the pool done, I was made aware of the setbacks, and I asked a lot of questions. Apparently, I didn't ask all the right questions, because I was told I could put a shed on a slab back there, but I wasn't aware of the square footage limitation. So if I would have been under 200 square feet, I would have been fine. I'm 280 square feet, because I made it a little bigger than that, so. Plus, I had a woman that lives in my house that wanted it to look nice, so that's why it looks kind of like a little house instead of just your typical garden shed. So as you can see by the picture I submitted, if I had to reduce it, I'd have to cut it right through that one window, and it wouldn't look so good, and it would cost us quite a bit of money. I don't know if you have any other questions?
Sorry, I'm losing my voice. Did you happen to set or submit an application to your HOA for this shed?
No, because I wasn't aware I needed to. We just got a new HOA last year. There's been a lot of turmoil in my neighborhood with the HOA, because the developer was the HOA until last year, and we started this project two years ago. And halfway through the project, we had no HOA. We just voted a new HOA in last October, and I was not aware of anything. In fact, this, this whole thing started, because I'll say, no good deed goes unpunished, because I submitted a picture to my HOA of the corner of the shed, because I wanted to paint my house the same color, so they would match. And I got a response back from the HOA, well, what is this? I says, well, it's my shed in my backyard. And then the next day, I, some lady emailed me saying, I need to see your plans and this. And I'm like, I don't have any plans. It's just four walls and a roof. And I said, and you're not a qualified engineer anyway. What would you do with those plans? You're going to just see four walls and a roof. Their design review committee has nobody who has any engineering experience at all. I says, the shed is built to code. So they called the county. The county came out, the inspectors looked at it, and the inspectors didn't find a problem with the way it was built. It was just the fact that it was too big.
When you said you had somebody advise you that it was okay to place the shed in the location of the property, do you know, do you recall who actually told you that?
Well, I was downstairs in Texas. I couldn't tell you by name, because I had a lot of questions. When we put the pool in, we got a permit, and that was when we first realized we had these setbacks. We weren't aware of it when we bought the house. And so they explained everything, and I'm like, well, is there any way you can put anything in the setback? Because the setback makes up like over 8,000 square feet of my backyard. If I were to put my shed in the center of the yard, which is about the only place you could put it, it would look really awkward, because I would have like 30 feet behind it and only like 20 feet to my house. So we were trying to make things, my wife and I spent the last two years trying to make this property our retirement paradise, and this was what looked aesthetically good to us when we put it in. And it seemed like it was like fitting with the rest of the neighborhood, because that's where everybody else has their shed.
You guys have any additional questions? Okay, thank you for your time, sir. I didn't see any speaker slips for this particular, we do? All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Kevin, before speakers, may I just make one comment, please? Would that be okay? Guys, I came from, 14 years ago, from a town that didn't have a lot of HOAs, and Richmond Hill is HOA-heavy. We have great ordinances, and what those do is they keep, if you drive to other towns, you look at signage, billboards, disarray, cars in front yards. And so I think what Bryan County does well, although sometimes I think people can see it as an overstep of government, it does keep your town looking really, really clean and nice and uniform. So I know we have a lot of people moving into Richmond Hill from other places, like myself 14 years ago, that may not be aware of county ordinances and HOAs. So just for the record, I don't know how many people look on Facebook, but you know, we can disseminate this information out. And I see some realtors here. That's always a good thing to ask your realtor. You know, can I get bylaws for these HOAs? And every HOA has an architectural design committee, and even if they're not engineers, they have bylaws. Those bylaws usually, they've looked at the county ordinances, what Audra was talking about earlier, the UDO, the unified development. And again, unified, just to keep everything looking nice. Not Stepford Wife nice, for us older people that know what that is, but just to keep things looking clean and neat. Does that make sense, guys? I'm sorry, I paid it to overstep.
Mr. Krueger, can you step back up to the microphone quick? I just got a call question, because I know there's been a lot of contention about when the HOA started. When, when was this, when was the actual shed constructed?
About three, four months ago.
Okay, and at that time, was your HOA in existence? Or I know there's been a recent transition, so the new HOA's been effect, in effect?
Well, the HOA, we voted into new HOA last October.
Okay. And the HOA said you guys covenants to sign, because usually HOAs are required to set up covenants based upon your location.
We have covenants, yes.
And the DRC was voted upon, you guys voted upon the, all the covenants of the DRC and the persons on the board?
No, we didn't get a vote on the DRC. That's the whole problem. The design review committee was not even talked about. It's buried in the covenants. And I had to, when all this started, I had to ask them, well, who is on the design review committee? Because I didn't even know who it was, and there's five people on the committee. None of those people have any construction background whatsoever, or any engineering background. And I asked the president of the HOA, I says, what qualifies them to judge if my plans are built to code or anything? I would rather have a county inspector tell me that than this committee that it's, they're, it's all based on opinion. If they don't like what you have, then they won't approve it. And I have submitted, since then, I've had some other things done, because I had to have my landscaping repaired, that was destroyed by the full net, and I submitted an application to HOA, because now, and I knew about it. But I didn't know about it when I had the shed built.
Okay, were you, were you aware of any structures that required your premises to consult your HOA prior to any structures being built on your, on your house, on your own property?
I wasn't aware when I started, no.
That's one, that's one issue. Thank you very much. I just wanted to do a timeline. Appreciate you.
And just one more quick clarification. And Ms. Krueger, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We, you know, county ordinances always supersede those HOA, but a lot of times they're lockstep. A lot of times those HOAs will look at what the ordinances say. So always, always, I had a friend, I have a friend that works at planning and zoning for the city, and I said, why do we have to get permits for everything? And she made the great point to me, and I think it's a good point to make here tonight, that you have those people, engineers, that come out and look and say, you know, okay, you could do it a better way, or these are the ordinances, and it saves this kind of, kind of chaos. And I hate, I hate this for you, Mr. Krueger, so we'll continue to, oh, sorry, I'm not chair anymore. Sorry. Old habits, keep going.
You speak freely. You're right. You're, 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 trust me, you've got everything to speak freely. Don't ever apologize.
Speaker slips.
No, don't ever apologize. We want to make sure the information is concise and clear. That's fine. Just to nip this in the bud, do we have a Barry Klein here? Barry, is this, are you specifically for this, different than everyone? All right, thank you. Awesome. Got that out of the way. Thank you. All right, we have a speaker slip for Ms. Maria G. Ramos. Is she here by chance? Can you please come to the mic? Thank you. And if you can kindly just speak your name, please clearly to the mic.
Yes, my name is Maria Ramos Hibs. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And I am here out of my free will to support my neighbors. And I am glad I came, because I see that the address that you have in there is actually my address. 85? Yeah, they are 83. I am right next door, and I get to see the structure every day. And I am for this structure. It looks beautiful. It is appealing to the eye, and it's absolutely beautiful. I have known Ms. Susan and Mr. Kevin for two years since they moved into the neighborhood, and I can tell you that they are trustworthy and they follow the rules. I have seen how they have work in their backyard. One time, they had a setback. They had to wait for a long time from someone from the county to come and look at it. They did not go ahead. They waited to get the appropriate permits or whatever they needed to do. Not that I was spying on them, but you know, just talking to them and knowing what they were doing. I have a lot of soccer balls in my backyard. They're still there. They're not missing. They're very good neighbors. That's what I'm trying to say. The structure, for safety reasons, they have two big gates on each side if somebody needs to get in. And in the rear, there is a big open area, just in case somebody needs to get in. So I do support that they have their, their shed in the back. And one of the issues with our HOA, we have had a lot of issues with it in the past. If you drive through our neighborhood, people have different kind of gates. So we talked about being organized and everything looking good, and that's when they're moving into our neighborhood. I've been in the neighborhood for eight years. And now we have a new HOA, and they're going, they're going to have, try to enforce the regulations that we have. So I do thank you very much for your time. And please know that I look at it from the, I have a window on the second floor, and I get to look at their property every day, and it looks, it looks beautiful. It looks pleasant. It does not look ugly. And one of the things that if it was bad-looking, there is Facebook, and I will have heard about it, because my neighbors post complaints. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Is there anybody else here to speak for or against that did not fill out a speaker slip? Sure, come on in, sir, please. Can you have your name for the record?
Sure. Sir, my name is Scotty Huber. I'm actually the president of the HOA that joins the property for Belfast Lake to Wicklow. So this property is in the back corner of our neighborhood, where the easement is. And we are in relations with the new HOA. They have had, the owner was of the property at one point. They, they did not turn over the HOA to the community for a period of time. So I think there was probably a little bit of gap there in some of the regulatory components of the HOA. But madam, you expressed very well that we have rules and regulations, not only from the county perspective, but from the HOA perspective, about our setbacks, about what we can do in the neighborhoods. For me, as a joining property, this looks like it potentially could set a precedence to say, I don't have to follow those rules. I don't have to follow those guidelines, as long as I come before the board and I just petition myself to say, I'm sorry, I didn't know. And to say that the, the board, or I'm sorry, the ARB for the HOA are not a bunch of engineers. So in my opinion, I feel like we need to abide by the county guidelines, the HOA guidelines, to make sure that when we are doing something on our property, that we are abiding by those regulations and those laws.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion from anybody? Okay, we're going to make a, do I have a motion to close this public hearing?
Make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're going to call to a vote. Before this, any other discussion prior to going? Everybody's okay with moving forward? Okay. Do I have a motion to vote? No, actually, do I have to just take a vote, correct? Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor? Motion to move? Making a motion to take a vote on variance, project 2025-0085?
It's hard.
It is. Make a motion to deny this variance.
I second that motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Stand.
Mr. and Ms. Krueger, just to let you know, so that variance did not pass. So what happens next is you can tomorrow get in touch with the staff, and this will move on up. You can appeal this decision. That will go to Superior Court for decision, if you would like to appeal that. But if you would like to get in touch with some of our great staff here tomorrow, they can let you know what to do moving forward, okay? Sorry, this happened. That was a hard one.
You step quick to the mic. We're going to make a motion to open next public hearing for variance, project 2025-1017. Board of Adjustment?
I make a motion to open hearing.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opened?
Good evening. Yet this is a project for a variance request on a property on Pine Ridge Court. This is located on the north end of Bryan County, in the Lake Lorraine subdivision. The request is to reduce both side setbacks from the 35 feet to 25 feet. And this shows you a closer location map here. Now, this property was recorded prior to any zoning ordinance. It was created in 1965 in Plat Book C, page 350. It's lot 34 again, of the Lake Lorraine subdivision. And currently is owned RR1 Rule Residential, which does require those 35-foot setbacks. And you can see the lot is pretty narrow, so it's only about 100 feet wide in its widest point, which is less than the 150 feet required for the RR1 zoning district. And the applicant is just planning to build a single-family home. So you can see some existing conditions of the site. The site slopes kind of down towards the lake at the rear of it, and then you can see, it's a pretty narrow lot between, looking in both directions, you can see the house over to the north there on image one. And this shows their concept plan for the proposed residence. Again, it's, has 35 from each side. They are able to meet the 50-foot setback from the front and the rear, and they are just requesting the 10-foot reduction on each side, which is a total of 28.57%. So with that being said, staff is recommending approval of the requested setbacks variance because the criteria are met under the UDO. And I can answer any questions you may have. Seeing none, thank you.
Do we have the applicant here to speak? Any other speaker slips for this particular scenario? Anybody wish to speak on this behalf? At that time, I make a motion to close public hearing, variance project number 2025-0107?
Make a motion to close hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion to call to a vote?
Make a motion that we approve this variance project 2025-0107.
Make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Making a motion to close the Board of Adjustment and open Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing?
Motion to open public hearing for planning and zoning.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're open for public hearing?
So this is a rezoning of variance application, which you deferred last month for property on Harris Trail. As a reminder, this property is approximately 4.5 acres, and they are requesting to rezone from RR1 to B2 for a multi-tenant shopping center. They're also requesting variances due to a planned roundabout. And as a reminder, the variances and rezoning must be voted on separately, and then both those recommendations will move concurrently to the BOC. Since that meeting, that previous meeting, the applicant has submitted a revised concept plan reducing those variance requests. And additionally, that planned roundabout is now likely to be a traffic signal instead. Staff did prepare an addendum in your package which addresses these changes, but they are still requesting those variances, just in case the roundabout does end up being the decision that moves forward. So right here, you'll see their previous concept plan, and then this is their revised plan. So they have reduced the variance request to two requests. One for the street yard, and this is the previous request for that street yard reduction. And they were requesting a 20-foot, or pardon, they're not requesting this 20-foot one anymore. They're requesting the 25-foot, which is what staff had recommended be done, as it doesn't require reduction in their street yard. It's just the front setback. The rear buffer request, they are no longer requesting there. And you'll see this is their previous plan. And so compared side by side, you'll see they're no longer requesting to encroach into that rear buffer. This is the front setback, and they have now, that's previously, from 75 feet to 20, and now requesting 25 feet, which is what staff had recommended in their previous variance request, as they can accommodate the street yard in that, and it's comparable to the city lots across Harris Trail there. So it would be consistent. And again, you'll see the side-by-side comparison there. And so they are also still requesting that street yard reduction for that internal drive, as it's necessary for that access. So you'll see those two variances highlighted there, the front yard setback and the street yard, just for that internal drive. They also did submit their original concept plan, which didn't include the roundabout. So this may be similar to what they would be doing if there were to be a traffic light. And we also wanted to include this to highlight that if you rezone to B2, it does include options such as a drive-through restaurant, which they were originally proposing, that they would be able to do under that rezoning. So staff did want to highlight that change to you, that could be possible. So staff is recommending approval of the rezoning request with the following conditions: that the TIA be finalized and approved by the county prior to any applications for land development or building permits being submitted. They would be required to comply with all conditions and improvements of the traffic study. The final design shall incorporate the future traffic improvement, weather, the roundabout, or traffic signal, including frontage requirements required by the engineering department. Should the access to the residential parcels on the east side of the property be located within the subject parcel, it must be maintained and shown on any site plan submitted for review. And then in terms of the variances requested, staff is recommending approval of the requested variances because the variance criteria are met. These include reduction of the street yard from 25 feet to two feet for approximately 176.5 linear feet to accommodate the internal drive, and reduction of the front setback from 75 to 25 feet, as shown on the concept plan. And I can answer any questions you have.
I have a question. It may have been in the packet or not. Was this property zoned from city to county in the past few years?
No, they had, at one point, they had gone to the city to try to annex it, and that did not go through. So they're back with us.
You and I had a discussion earlier that we're pretty much sure that there's going to be a traffic light going there.
So the BOC, I believe, this month, or I mean, the previous month approved a study to look at the traffic light. So that appears to be the route they're taking, our engineering department is going to take now.
And I ask this every meeting. As far as GDOT, what are our, is there a timeline on expansion of Harris Trail, a widening of Harris Trail?
They wouldn't, GDOT wouldn't do Harris Trail.
That would be a county.
County and city, yeah.
And is there a timeline on that?
I do not know off the top of my head what the timeline is. Our engineering department would handle that.
I don't know that there is a.
Yeah.
There's not. I know, I ask this every time. I'm thinking somebody will take the hint.
Answer any additional questions?
We had called in the past, but we do have the applicant. Please to speak.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
Commission. I'm Randy Dykes with ME SAC Engineering. I'm representing the applicant. Sarah did a good job explaining how we kind of met with staff and made changes to meet their recommendations. One of the things I want to bring up that we talked about last time, you know, we feel this is a good use of the property, changing it from residential to commercial. Right across the street from it are parcels that are already designated commercial in the city, or either already has a gas station on it across from it also. It's at the intersection of, you know, major highways, so it's not ideal to build a house there. We feel like it's ideal for commercial. And we agree with staff's recommendations and agree with their conditions. And I can answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you for submitting the original traffic light study, too. I appreciate that. Do we have Barry Klein? Please come. Thank you, sir. You can state your name for the microphone, please?
I'm Barry Klein. Basically, I'm a local dentist. I sold my dental practice in Pennsylvania about three years ago, and my wife and I decided to move down to, down south, and we picked Richmond Hill. We were the first, first people in the Hartwood neighborhood, which is, I think there's supposed to be 10,000 homes at some point. That said, I have four females in my family, and they all go and get their nails done, and they go to Richmond Hill Nail Salon to... And they go to Richmond Hill Nail Salon to, the owners of the Richmond Hill Nail Salon are the ones that are proposing this project. And from my experience in the nail salon and interacting with Tai and Hong, they're just great people. They run a fantastic business, super clean, super efficient. I think they would be an asset to the community, this type of business that they're proposing. That's about it.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker slots? Got others? Thank you. Ms. Surtipols?
Good evening.
Good evening. Happy Tuesday. Thank you all for allowing us to come again and speak before you, to talk about this again. For the most part, you know how I feel about it. We talked about it the last time, and I appreciate you holding it over another month. And forgive me, it's allergy season, so I sound like a toad. So anyway.
I think we're all suffering that wrath.
Anyway, just a couple of things I wanted to highlight. Again, just to remind, I live in the property that is adjacent to it, kind of behind it, when you look at the plans. And so I'm not for it, just because, one, I think it should not be commercial. I would be for it being residential, staying residential. But when you start talking about putting a restaurant, a drive-through, and things like that, that just changes the whole gamut of the neighborhood. And most of us who live in the neighborhood, or the other houses, the other houses next to it, you know, it's a safety concern from a crime standpoint, but also from the traffic standpoint. And I know there's a study for the, for the traffic light. But if I heard you correctly, there's still no timeline for a traffic light? Is that correct?
I think that.
I think we're talking about this. Go ahead. I think that was for the study itself. As of right now, they're, everybody's been well aware, known on the community page, about the traffic light being preferential because of cost, but as of right now, that it's not definitive.
Okay.
That's really up to the county and the engineering at that point.
No, that is, go ahead, Amanda. That is definitive. We were talking about the widening of Harris.
Okay, so that is definitive.
Well.
The light is definitive?
Well, not definitive on that, but the timeline of the study.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just want to say for the traffic lights, what occurred at the Board of Commissioners meeting this, just earlier this month, is they went ahead and approved a task order for an engineering firm to start with the engineering and design for the intersection improvements for a traffic light. So they've approved that task order so that that engineering firm can go ahead and start that engineering and design work. And I think the idea is that they can then get through the design right-of-way acquisition if needed, and in order to do some capital improvement budgeting for next year to actually install and construct the traffic light. And once engineering and design is complete, the engineers are saying it could be about a nine to twelve-month process.
I'm happy to hear that there's going to be a light there. So again, I just prefer that it stay residential. The other piece, I still think is a safety issue. And I also wonder about property value. So that's, that's my take on it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do I have Ms. Margaret Harris Jones as the next speaker, please, based on the slip? Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Good afternoon to all of you. That was my daughter, and she covered practically everything that I would say. And my main concern really is the safety aspect with the congestion. The area is already congested, and to bring a business in, there is going to be a subdivision right across from Timberland Timber Trail, right across from the business on Harris Trail. That's going to bring in more vehicles. Going down to Port Royal, two other areas are under construction. And that's going to bring in another influx of vehicles. And my main concern is the safety. Residents should feel safe. And with all that influx of traffic, there is a fatality of something will happen. And that's one of my greatest concern. And I would like for the property to remain rural residence. And I am a descendant. The road, Harris Trail, is named after my ancestors, so I have a passion for it. So we thank you all for your consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Do I have Stephen Griffin? Come up to the mic, please. Please make sure you state your name for the mic as well.
Yes. Good evening. How are you?
Good evening, sir.
I'm Stephen Griffin. And I guess I want to start off by, speak about the elephant in the room. We're all from the same tree, Harriestree, same ancestors, born, raised in Richmond Hill. So, and normally, everything's in sync, but on this subject matter, we have a difference. I think, by the way, the school is relocating. The, I'm retiring, I'm not here now. My business, my work has taken me elsewhere, but I retire next year, and I plan to build in Brisbane, which I own the property that's adjacent to the property that's for sale. There's some talk, and I've gotten around, tried to get a survey from the DOT on the accident frequency at Timber Trail and Harris, and I couldn't get it. But I spoke to some people, fire department, some other. The accident rate has gone up, but it's gone up compared to when it was a country. It's no longer the country anymore. It's more rules, quasi-suburban now, where you got more traffic. The school brought in more cars. From Port Royal, there are some communities going up that way. But there is another access to one forty-four before you even get to the intersection to relieve some of that. Furthermore, I just want to speak to when the property became available, it was offered to everybody within the family?
No.
It was offered to everybody? Let me talk, please. It was available for everybody in the family that wanted to purchase that land? Okay, to purchase that land. Michael purchased that land a few days prior to them getting a realtor and making it available to the public. And he purchased the land. Next. I made notes on my phone at this time, not only.
Take your time.
If I could just take a few seconds, please. You can, anybody who has not filled out a speaker slip, you can still get a chance to speak on behalf or for or against. I will make sure of it. Okay? So if there's anything that needs to be spoken, especially in reference to anything else, to have your voice heard, we will make sure that you can speak once we get through the speaker slips, folks. Just wanted to make that aware.
And lastly, just to summarize, this process has been going on for about a year now. And the owner of the property has worked very diligently and very patiently to, to adjust his design probably three or four times, just to make it aesthetically good for the community, work within the parameters. I think this is maybe the fourth hearing I've been to where they made adjustment by the recommendations, and he has worked towards that. I've met him, talked to him. I think he'll be a welcome addition to the community, and probably as a business owner, be a good partner for the community of Brisbane, which we call it, on Harris Trail. So, thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
We can recognize Mr. William Campbell?
Good evening. I'm William Camp.
Say your name, please.
I'm William Campbell, William Michael Campbell. I'm the Michael that Mr. Griffin has just spoke about. We all have lived in Richmond Hill through our, we were born in Richmond Hill. I left in nineteen seventy-two. I got married and moved to Baltimore. We all own, still own property, even the property that's for sale. We all own that. Our grandfather, we used to farm the same land that's for sale now. And what he taught us, he taught us some important things. One of the most important things that he taught us was land is valuable, but land can also be used to fulfill gaps. When someone needs something, you sell the land, you share the wealth with your family. And that's what I'm doing with this property. This property is for sale. There's other properties that we all own. My family's house is still on the, on the property that my parents bought, where I grew up through high school. As I said, our careers have taken us in different paths. As I said, I moved to Baltimore, and I taught school for forty-three years. I'm retired. I retired in twenty fourteen. My plans are to come back to Richmond Hill. Something I said when I moved out, I said I would never come back because of the way we did when we were growing up, farming, farming, farming. But now Richmond Hill has become a very prosperous, prosperous place. And it's a place that I see that is growing really fast, and I love it. All of us, the pros and the cons. If you were to go back to our original people, we all came from the same, the same family members. We all are Harrises. I'm a Campbell because my mother, who was Harris, married a Campbell. So that's how that part came in why I'm a Campbell. We wanted to purchase this, I wanted to purchase this property. And when I found out it was for sale, that's what I did. The property, as Mr. Griffin explained, was open. My aunt and two other people were the people who were in charge of selling this property. This property was offered to one of the Harris brothers. He wanted to purchase just a small portion of it in front of the house that they have there. The stipulation was, if you purchase the property, you have to purchase that entire track. Because once you cut off a portion of that track, then the property is no longer realized by people. Who wants to buy just a little one piece of property when the whole part of it's been cut off? So he turned it down. When I found out he turned it down, I spoke to my aunt, and I said, listen, I like to purchase it. And that's what I did. I purchased this property, a year or two later. That's why I put it up for sale. I put it up for sale to help my family so that we can improve our lives. We were not rich growing up. We grew up thinking we were rich because our parents gave us everything we need, which was food, shelter, and a good education. But as far as having all those amenities that people have now, cars and fancy clothes and stuff, we didn't know anything about that. Growing up in the country, we had the basics, and we loved it. So what I'm saying is, the nail salon, the restaurant, and everything, I see that as an addition to the community. I see that as something that will help the community prosper even more. Yes, it's a business. And as Mr. Griffin said, the school, the school is now moving to Belfast. So the school will not be there. Therefore, the kids, the traffic will not be there, the foot traffic. We agreed to change the boundaries so that, because we were told that there was going to be a roundabout. So we went through everything we needed to do to get that okayed, which took a lot of the property away, the front part of the property. So I think that we have met our burden on showing that the community needs something. And there are no other restaurants anywhere close by. I've heard some people say, well, a nail salon, who needs a nail salon? There's a nail salon farther down Seventeen. There's a nail, as women know, you want a nail salon because you go there. We, as men, we go there also. We go there for pedicures also. So having something like that, having a restaurant where you can go get a fast meal, a quick meal, the nearest place that you can get a meal from there is down on the corner of, I don't know, the street where Timber Trail runs out, and that's a gas station. If you go any other direction on Harris Trail, that's almost a mile away. It's a little longer than a mile before you get to more gas stations. But you have to go out on Seventeen to get to a restaurant, just to get some food. And I think that this is a good thing going on, and I hope that it goes through, and I appreciate your time. Any questions?
Thank you very much for your time, sir.
All right, thank you.
Commission recognizes Ms. Catherine Johnson, speaker's slip.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Johnson, and I live half a mile from the site. And wanted to just, I'm going to try to kind of just run through some bullet points for why I'm in support of the rezoning to commercial use. I used to be a planning and zoning commissioner, so also I wanted to say thank you for your time and volunteering for this. I know it's a lot of pressure and a lot of information, so thank you. But I was also on the committee for the UDO and community planning. And I know that the Blueprint Bryan Twenty Forty-Five Plan highlights the need to designate areas for commercial development to serve our growing community. I think this is a prime spot for that because there's already commercial property in that area. There's a lot of neighborhoods within walking distance that would get a lot of vehicle traffic off the road. I personally walk my dog all over the place in that area now that sidewalks are there. Whether it's a light or a roundabout, those all now have to have sidewalks. So I think it would create a pedestrian-friendly area for us to have a restaurant or other services to go to. We also are in a critical need for commercial space in Bryan County. We have a lot of business owners that would like to open a business in Richmond Hill in Bryan County, and there's no space available. This is something that I constantly heard about when I was at the Chamber of Commerce. I still have friends to this day that are trying to open something, but they would have to go and build something. So this would be satisfying that need. The proposed site, like I said, is in close proximity to multiple neighborhoods, local parks. And this would be a resource for the community that's living there. This would also create significantly more tax revenue for the county than one residential property would. And I think that's definitely a goal for the county as it grows, is to take some of that burden off of homeowners and use some of the sales tax and other things that come with having a commercial property. A lot of our community talks about wanting to have more services in the area and less townhomes and less homes and people coming in, so this would also satisfy those complaints. I know there's a lot of concern about traffic, but a small restaurant and nail salon would most likely have modest traffic, and it's spread out and not necessarily like a school or big-box store where you've got high concentration of that. Also, I know in the past, there's been concern about drainage ponds and other things, but a lot of times that helps with flooding and are designed in a very specific way to make sure that that property is working with the other areas in that vicinity. This is also a local family. Tai and Hong own a business here. They live here. They own multiple properties here. This is not someone that's just coming to plop this down and don't have an investment here in Bryan County. So ultimately, as a resident of Bryan County for twenty-nine years, as the prior CEO of the chamber, I think this is a great addition to our community. I think Bryan County really needs to think about how we can connect our residents to our commercial, and commercial properties and our parks so that people are able to ride bikes and walk and enjoy the community that we live in. So thank you all for your time. So thank y'all for your time.
The chair recognizes Amamiel Harris, please. Did I pronounce that correctly? I'm sorry if I didn't.
Hi, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Okay, I'm coming, I'm coming here for you in reference to John Harris property. Okay, John Harris was my grand uncle, and his wife was Mary Bush Harris. Okay, John and Mary had three daughters. They were Lula Harris McIver, Hannah Harris Newton, and Minnie Harris Latson. Dorothy D. McIver was the only granddaughter of John and Mary Harris. Dorothy D. McIver was not married and never had any children. Her mother was Lula McIver. Okay, John, let me, I'll quote this. John Harris died in nineteen fifty-nine. Okay, my grand aunt Mary died on August twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-two, and was ninety years old. My grand uncle John Harris was eighty-three years old when he died. Okay, Aunt Mary and Uncle John had three daughters that died during the period year of two thousand and two thousand eight. Their granddaughter Dorothy McIver died on December the ninth, twenty fourteen, ten years ago. Okay, John Harris denied selling their land to Henry Ford of Dearborn, Michigan, when he came to Wade Station in Richmond Hill in nineteen twenty-five and was purchasing land in Brian Neck area. All heirs of both John and London Harris was told to never sell their properties. The fraudulent will of Dorothy McIver dated December the ninth, twenty fourteen, verified this request too. An item four residual estate in the enclosed prefaces stated that but not including any property over which I may have the power or disposition or appointment. Dorothy McIver grandmother, Mary Bush Harris, her mother, Lula McIver, Hannah Newton Harret, and Minnie Harris Latson signed an order on October the second, nineteen seventy-two, verified this request also. This signed order is in the Pembroke probate court of Bryan County, and it says the only record we have on file for John Harris, who died on August the sixteenth, nineteen fifty-nine, is the order declaring no administration necessary. The petition allows for the distribution of the property of the deceased as agreed upon by all heirs. No administration necessary means when an individual has no, has not made a will or if the court deems the will to be invalid, the estate can be handled through a petition for no administration necessary. The petition allows the distribution of the property of the deceased as agreed upon by all heirs. The petition can only be done when all heirs agree to the distribution of the property. The fraudulent will of Dorothy D. McIver, which I saw from the state of Georgia, county of Chatham, has no address of the attorney name, the law firm's name, the telephone number, nor any affixed seal label, label. Seal, I mean, stamped seal. The will showed, the will shows December the ninth, twenty fourteen, and witness whereof date, which is seven days prior to the death of Dorothy. The date from the homegoing service program was Tuesday, December the sixteenth, twenty fourteen, and the burial date was Tuesday, December the twenty-third. Her will was made seven days prior to her death. Again, she died on December the ninth, twenty fourteen. Seven days later, her homegoing service was on December the sixteenth, twenty fourteen, and seven days later, burial on December the twenty-third. Okay, what I found out from the probate court is this information. The sale dates in this deed sales book. Okay, the first date was January the first, nineteen fifty-eight. The grantor and the grantee of the will. Okay, it's my understanding and research shows the grantee means someone who receives a grant. The grantor means someone who makes a grant. Okay, as of January the first, nineteen fifty-eight, the deed book shows the grantee was John Harris. The grantor, no one was listed. Okay, on the next date, and the deed book shows October the second, twenty seventeen. The grantee was Isabel Williams and Bradley Victor. The grantor was John Harris. Now, John Harris died on August the sixteenth, nineteen fifty-nine. Here, this deed book date of grantor granting this property to Isabel, the grantee of Isabel, is fifty-eight years ago prior to the transaction. That means John Harris was deceased, and he did not grant this petition to Isabel to sell the land. Okay, on August the eighth, August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, Isabel Williams became the grantor. And Bradley Victor, the grantee, was William Campbell for thirty thousand dollars. My situation is with that situation, here he is deceased. Fifty years ago, this is not granting anyone his property, and all of a sudden, the property is granted. So I am requesting that the legal sale and ownership of all of John Harris' properties in Richmond Hill, Georgia, Bryan County, be canceled because of this erroneous grantee and grantor deed book information regarding Isabel Williams, William Campbell, and Bradley Victor. Because John Harris died on August the sixteen, nineteen fifty-nine, and was not living on October twelfth, twenty seventeen, and August the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, for the three hundred thousand dollars for William Campbell's sale date for partial number oh five four oh two six. We are requesting that the four point five acres and any other sale on all parcels belonging to John Harris' property, which we are not aware of, be denied immediately. Please keep ours zoning as RR dash one rural residential and all John properties, John Harris' properties. Both John Harris and London Harris refused and did not accept any welfare payments because of, because they were afraid that any someone might be used later to take their properties. We, their children, paid them monthly. They did also what they would receive for their payments from welfare. They also asked us to not put them in any nursing home for the same reason. William Campbell is not a blood Harris relative and yet is selling the property to another non-blood relative Harris. Please deny all non-blood relatives, relatives ownership to John Harris' properties. So my thing is, here my uncle, grand uncle died in nineteen...
Excuse me. Guys, we have given everyone the respe, I apologize, Chairman, as we have given everyone the respect to get up. This lady has lived here her entire life. If she wants to speak for thirty minutes, we're gonna let it. No discussion, please, inside this chamber tonight. Go ahead, Ms. Harris.
I'm finished with what I have to say. I'm finished with what I have to say.
It's okay, go ahead.
Pardon?
You can go ahead.
She said she had to say she's up.
Yes, my speech is ended.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
So, so Ms. Harris, I would like to say to you that tonight, I appreciate all the information that you did give to us and about the legality of the will and the past documents. We would have no jurisdiction over that. And so I would ask you to seek guidance of an attorney.
But this information was given to me from the Pembroke Probate Office.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and if he's died fifty-eight years ago, how could he, you know, give someone permission to purchase his land? Or give them permission?
Yes, ma'am, I understand that. And that would need to be taken to an attorney to have legal action taken. But I appreciate the information, and I hope that you guys can find good legal counsel for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. This is not the venue that can, can give that sort of, you know, we can't make that type of decision to grant that. I do apologize.
Because, I mean, you know, we live in that area, you know, for years. And all of a sudden, now it's being given to someone who is not even a Harris blood relative. And here he is, you know, fifty years ago deceased, grantee and grantor. John Harris didn't grant, you know, this family his property because he was dead fifty-eight years ago.
We understand one hundred percent. We're just, what we're advising is just definitely seek legal counsel for other proceedings on that. Yeah, has that been brought up in the past at all in terms of that, the legal proceedings and the validity as to whether or not the transfer is actually?
We wouldn't have anything to do with that.
Okay. Okay, they would have this, she would have to go to Pembroke and the court system there, I guess? Fair enough, okay. Okay, we're all to speak. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak upon this matter that has not spoken?
I'll take a brief moment.
Sure. And if you could, please state your name.
My name's Chris Lane. I'm an attorney with the law firm Warner, Strauss, Waits, Greenberg, and Shaw. I have examined title to this property in contemplation of the closing of the transaction. There's good marketable title to be had, and I do not see issues. We're coming out of multiple orders from the probate court. So with all due respect, there is good title to the property to be conveyed. So...
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak for or against this matter? Would anybody like to make a motion? I guess we're good. Yeah, pick at that. Okay, I make a motion to, uh, there's a lot.
I make a motion to close the area.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're closing this motion. Do you have a motion to take a vote? We're voting separately, okay. So do we have a motion for the variance first in this matter, please? Rezoning first on the variance? Okay, fair enough, okay. Would anybody like to make a motion for the rezoning vote?
I make a motion to approve the rezone.
Would that include staff conditions? Including staff conditions?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
I would like discussion before we...
Discussion, yeah.
I just want to say one thing. Trying to temper my words here. Richmond Hill's a beautiful city. We do not give due respect to the people who are born and raised here. I understand progress. I see a need for commercial walkable spaces, as Catherine Johnson spoke. I'm a newcomer here. I've lived here fourteen years. Shouldn't get emotional in government business. This is very difficult because I've seen this for seven years on this board. The people that were born and raised here are getting pushed to the side. It happened in North Bryan, and it's happening in Richmond Hill. And I understand commercial businesses needed. I understand making money selling property. And I just want to take a moment to just recognize all the people that have lived here, that have been generational families here, that farmed land here, fed people. And I understand when families grow and we have multiple generations and all sheets of family, how difficult this is. So I think before we take a vote, we just needed to say that, that this is a very difficult decision. And this will move up to the county commissioners for final approval or denial. But that is all I wanted to say about that to the Harris family.
Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna harken back, so. So we had a motion to second, so we're gonna be taking this to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. On the second issue of the variance, do I have the motion to? What, anybody make a motion to approve it?
I make a motion to approve the variance's staff recommendations.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes. Motion to close rezoning variance, Project Twenty Twenty Four, Twelve Oh Eight Three Three.
I apologize.
You're okay, thank you.
I make a motion to open public hearing.
Okay, we're gonna close the one, open the other. So gonna be opening rezoning, motion to open. I'm gonna do that again. Rezoning Project Twenty Twenty Four, Twelve Oh Eight, do I have a motion to open?
Motion open.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, good evening again. This is a request for a rezoning on Rambling Creek Road. This request is to rezone the current property from its current A-five agricultural to the RR one rural residential district in order to subdivide. And this is located on the north end of the county. And you can see the closer up location map here. This is mostly surrounded by all family property, and the one family member is essentially selling the two and a half acres to another family member. They would like to subdivide that in order to take ownership and have the subdivision to be recorded. There is no current proposed development for this property. And you can see the existing zoning map here shows that it's mostly surrounded by other rural residential one acre tracks. So this does meet the comprehensive plan as well, which is in the low-density residential, which shows the one unit per acre or less due to the lack of infrastructure which this property has. And this is a very beautiful piece of property. If you're not familiar with the Rambling Creek area, the property to be rezoned is actually kind of built on a cliff. You can kind of see an image too, just past the tree line where the topography dips down quite a bit. So it would likely be very difficult for them to ever build a house if they ever wish to on this property. But from everything that's been spoken to us, that is not the plan at this time. And this shows you the total two point five acres to be subdivided from their proposed plat. No additional access is needed because the property line is that paved driveway that they have going across. And staff is recommending approval of the requested rezoning. And I can answer any questions you may have.
Anybody have questions on this? Is Mr. Sterling present, or is the questioner present? Wishes to speak? No speakers, please? Is there anybody for or against the wishes to speak in reference to this? Do I have a motion to close rezoning Project Twenty Twenty Four, Twelve Oh Eight?
I make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion for both for or against?
I make, I make a motion to approve this rezoning project two zero two five zero one zero eight.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion to close rezoning Project Twenty Twenty Five, Zero One Zero Eight.
I make a motion to open.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good evening again. This is a rezoning request on IG Linear Road. They're requesting to rezone from the A-five agricultural to the RR two point five rural residential in order to subdivide an eight-acre tract that would allow for three additional home sites. This is also located on the north side of Bryan County, very close to the Bullock County line. You can see the corner of the property touches the Bullock County line. And you can see the surrounding zoning map here is primarily agricultural lots as well as some other rural residential lots, such as the one across the road, as well as some non-conforming A-five lots, which are just agriculturally zoned lots that are less than the five-acre minimum required. And this property also lies in that low-density residential area, which supports one acre per, one unit per acre due to the lack of infrastructure found in this area, which recommends both the A-five district and the proposed RR... both the A5 district and the proposed RR-2.5 zoning district. And you can see the current exist, current conditions from these pictures. It's just an undeveloped wooded track from both sides of IG Linear Road, both looking towards and away from the Bullock County line. And looking at the concept plan that they have provided, it's a proposed subdivision for three home sites. No site would be less than 2.5 acres per home. That would allow for three additional driveways. This is more than the minimum distance required between driveways on the county road, and engineering had no concerns with this. No lot is smaller than two and a half acres, and again, because they're rezoning to that 2.5 district, they could not have more than three lots on this subdivision. If they wanted more than three, they would have to rezone to something smaller, and that may would trigger the major subdivision process for them at that point. So staff is also recommending approval of this rezoning, and I can answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Thank you. Any speaker's slips?
Thank you.
Anybody wish to speak for or against? Have a motion to close to rezoning project 2025-0108?
I make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can I have a motion to vote for or against?
Make a motion to approve the rezoning project 2022-50108.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to close planning and zoning, Public Commission? Staff, do we have any other business?
No other business.
Thank you. Questions, concerns regarding dinner? Discussion? Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that was... Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
We are closed.